The First Order of Business is to adjourn the budget. And we would rather for which to say that one nation under God, the individual, the liberating justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the agenda. We make a check in the end. Yes, moving ahead. We're going to move up Willie Costas up after the budget administration stuff, so he'll be just before the liquor store. Okay. Perfect. I'm sure you appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the finance agenda second. Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to read their minutes? Any corrections, deletions? Motion approved. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To approve the list of claims for July twenty twenty one. Everybody have a chance to cut them. Any questions on any of the claims?
A motion to approve.
I'll say it. Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To accept the financial statements for the general liquor wastewater sewer pumps for July thirty first, twenty twenty one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To approve the resolution, twenty twenty nine, will step from the garden of Fort Francis and International Falls about the bridge recommending that enforcing government ownership of the bridge. Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Who the ruling is that is the city's official newspaper publication.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, okay.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. This time the lead to Willie Costas coming to justice about the Rainier River full-scale exercise here.
Well, thank you. I'll make sure I speak into the way so everybody can hear me, although I do speak very loud anyway.
Will you present your documents?
Yeah.
Wish these are green or the end of the term?
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah. I'm not going to sing either, so you get that. All right, thank you, everybody. For those who don't know me, and my name is Willie Costas, I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator and a deputy for the Coochin County Sheriff's Office here in Coochin County. Today, I'd like to talk about the Rainier River International Full-Scale Exercise. If you want to turn to your supporting documents, the fact sheet is the one that I'm going to be going off of. On Thursday next week, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, from nine till three-thirty, a full-scale exercise is going to take place, and basically, the epicenter is going to be Rainier. It's all going to be stationed around Rainier, and I'm going to talk more about all the different sites that we're going to evaluate. But first, I want to give you a background as far as who's sponsoring this exercise that we're doing. Coochin County Sheriff's Office, obviously, in Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and the Minnesota State Fire Marshal's Division. That's a grant funding that was provided through the Rail and Pipeline Safety Account. I applied for this grant just about three years ago. It's the largest grant that Homeland Security and the Fire Marshal's Office has ever given in the state of Minnesota. So we were lucky enough to get that, and that's provided all of the different trainings that you see if you look at the supporting documents that I gave you. All the trainings that have taken place in the last three years have been supported because of that grant that I got. And actually, it started even earlier, twenty fifteen. I had my first training session here in this hall in a roundtable discussion. I think you were, that was the very first time that I've ever done any type of class or exercise, so. Now, a background on this. The exercise is basically a culmination of all the years, all the training and exercises, you know, that we've done, the meetings and trainings, the planned revisions, the drills, and the exercises that we've done in the last three and a half years. So this is going to end with this full scale. A little bit about what a full scale is. That is the closest it gets to the real thing. So we're going to have all these agencies responding, almost forty different agencies, both local, state, and federal agencies, actually responding to this at different locations throughout our, both Rainier and International Falls, which has never been done before. This is actually the largest full-scale exercise Minnesota has ever done, and it's going to happen right here in Coochin County and most of it, the epicenter right here in Rainier, Minnesota. And I think we all know why. We have the busiest rail port on the northern border. The chemicals, as you all well know, the chemicals that come through here are just about every household chemical you can think of, including the crude oil. So my exercise is going to be based around, it has to be based around a rail incident because that's part of the grant, so it's got to be rail-related. So I named it Operation Walla because I thought it was fitting for our area, obviously, and so we put a lot of work into this. Full scale is probably about three years of planning just to make this happen, and the logistics for it are outrageous. It's just two of us planning this whole thing, so it's been a lot of my time. I was supposed to be retired, but because of this, I've been full-time just trying to get this thing to go, and I think it's going to go, it's going to be wonderful. The participating agencies, and I'll get to them a little bit. As you see down below, the participating agencies, a lot of, a lot of different, and this is not all of them. We're going to have a lot of people coming in. We've rented the Candle Lever Hotel, the entire thirty-two rooms and all the conference rooms for two days. So we plan on basing the operations right here in Rainier, Minnesota. So a lot of it, and as I go into the evaluation testing sites, and I'll explain why we're going to use Rainier as the main focal point. Now, a little bit about the testing sites. Now, if you want to turn and go to the map that I gave you, and I know I gave some of the audience members the map also, it's important, and why I gave you the colored ones is because I'm going to talk about the blue and the purple and the gold and what they mean in this. So if you want to start on the lower left, we're going to look at Rainy Lake Medical Center. Now, what I did is I created objectives, objectives that I wanted to see done that day. And it's all going to be based around a scenario of a rail incident and a hazardous material spill, both on land and in the water off the bridge. So we're going to be testing our abilities to respond and the resources locally to those two different sites. And remember now, because we're isolated, I've based all my training for the last five years on the first six hours. We are alone in our response, county, countywide, we're on our own at this point for six hours before state and federal resources come in to help us. So what that meant is getting all these different agencies ready and prepared for something like this. So it's important that we're all on the same page, and again, I'll go into more of the logistics of it, but I want to keep it brief because I know you have other things under the thing. But looking at Rainy Lake Medical Center, far bottom left, I created the objectives on what I wanted to see our hospital do. They have to look at their intake process, their decontamination process, their triage process, and they have to look at an overwhelming response, meaning if something were to happen in this area, and it doesn't always mean that it's going to be a hazardous material or a rail, it could be any disaster that happens in our community, but we have to be ready for overwhelming that particular location, right? So I created the objectives to test just those things at Rainy Lake Medical Center. So they took that, they took those objectives that I gave them, and they ran with them. They ordered new equipment, they tested, they've been exercising within their facility to be ready for this particular drill. So they've been outstanding, and I think you've seen some of it online, and you've seen some of it now in the Rainy Lake Gazette, all those things that they've been doing in preparation for Operation Walla, and they've been fantastic. So what we're going to do is, and I don't want to say too much, because a lot of this is, we want to surprise everybody, but we're going to have role players. I'm going to have up to twenty different role players at each, split up at each one of these evaluation sites, and they're going to act like they're sick, like they're being contaminated by, say, oil or a chemical, or they're injured because of the accident. So Rainy Lake Medical Center will get different patients. They'll be getting them by walk-ins, they'll be getting them by ambulance, and they'll be getting them by helicopter, because I have a helicopter coming that will be landing just outside here at the entrance into Rainier and picking up patients. So that hospital will be tested with those three different areas and how they're going to handle that amount of people. They're bringing in extra people for this, they're testing their emergency operations plan, which is what I did with each one of these evaluation sites, because they all have emergency operations plans, just like we do as a county. So we need to test that plan, and I think I've done that by creating the objectives to fit within their emergency operations plan. So they're going to be tested very well. So moving on, if you see the next lower right is, it's called the Shelter in the JIC. The JIC means the Joint Information Center. Whenever you have an emergency at this scale, real life, you would have to open up an area where the press would go. So you have to have informed the public in very, right after that accident, as soon as you get enough facts to get to the public, you have to put that out to the press, and we're doing that by creating this Joint Information Center where I'm having KCC TV come in, they're actually going to do and film it, but they're going to act as a news crew. I'm also having local press there to ask questions. I'm having role players go into that Joint Information Center and ask questions to the public officials that I have on that stand. It could be the sheriff, it could be PCA, Packaging Corporation of America, CN, all the officials that need, that could give that information about what happened that day, they're going to give to that press. It's testing our people to be able to do that in real life. So I created objectives on what I wanted to see come out of the JIC and then the Shelter. Now, if we were to displace people in Rainier because we had a fire close to the bridge because of, say, crude oil, and depending on wind, if that wind was blowing that cloud, which is toxic chemicals in that cloud, we would have to remove certain people from the city limits. So they have to have a place to go. So I created the Shelter where they'll actually set up cots and have an intestinal intake process at the back of its gym. So I'll have role players that would say, I'm from Rainier, I was asked to evacuate, I need a place to go and kind of get my thoughts together, create a plan of where I'm going to be spending the night. So that's where they're going to go, and the public health is going to be sponsoring and putting that on, along with American Red Cross and the Salvation Army at that location. So they'll actually feed people, they'll get water, they hydrate them, and then we'll make sure that they're relocated to a safe location. Now, another, if you go to the blue box next to that, it's called the ELC and the Dispatch. ELC stands for Emergency Operations Center. That's my area. So that's below the Law Enforcement Center, and that's where I'm going to coordinate, I'm going to coordinate the response of all of this. Everything that you see on this map will come from that. So I created, along with Homeland Security personnel, objectives on how I'm going to be tested down there, how I'm going to respond, and how I'm going to get the resources to all these different locations. And if, for example, if we need more fire trucks, I created a resource manual for our entire county that has all the emergency vehicles, all the construction companies, if I need larger trucks and whatever, you name it, anything you can think of that's needed in an emergency, I have it in the resource manual. So from that, I have a staff, and I have five different areas that I've trained up people in that, in operations, logistics, command, management, all those different people have jobs within the ELC. So we've been training for the last few months just to get ready for this, any incident. So I'm going to be tested in that area. Now, if you look at the dispatch, the dispatch is going to be overwhelmed. Communications is the largest problem in any disaster. Think about how we're going to tie forty-some different agencies in and communicate all as one. That's a job in itself. So I created what's called an ICS 205. That is a form that has all the radio frequencies, all the cell phone numbers, any way of communicating emails with all these agencies so we can be united in our response. And it's, believe me, it's much more complicated than that, but it's, we're going to also test something that's probably been done twice ever in the nation, and we did it once here just over a year ago. We're actually going to create a patch, what's called with radio, eight hundred megawatt radios, and we're going to, that patch is created from our dispatch to Saint Paul Highway Patrol, who will then patch us into all the Canadian officials on the other side, will be able to communicate with them via our radios, which is done twice. Detroit did it once, we did it a year ago, and we're going to do it for the third time Thursday, which is huge for us. In my world, that is probably one of the biggest honors because I also have FEMA. FEMA is recognizing this operation in their national newsletter, and they're sending FEMA officials from Chicago just to watch this whole thing go down. So Rainier is going to get a lot of press nationwide over this, and our ability to respond. So in my world, that's as big as it gets. If you go one up from that now, the PCA, Packaging Corporation of America, and the dam, they're also testing their ability, because if you, and I know that you guys know that, that our water intakes for both International Falls and Fort Francis, I should say, are on that river. And if a product goes in at the Rainier Bridge, a top-floating or anything that sinks to the bottom, our water supplies for both cities are affected. Now, you're looking at ten thousand in Fort Francis, and you're looking at probably closer to seven thousand in our area. If we have to shut our water takes in, down on both cities, International Falls water will be able to supply about two and a half days worth of water. So we have to make alternative plans if anything has to be shut down for any length of time, which we have. We've thought of that, and hopefully, we never have to implement it. So the PCA and the dam also want to be tested, and they're going to test within themselves. I'm not going to have evaluators. I should say that evaluators from, that I've picked, the top ones in Minnesota, coming from Minneapolis, coming from Duluth, coming from Saint Paul, the ones that, like, say at Rainy Lake Medical Center, the top medical personnel are coming in to watch and evaluate that facility on how they react to this emergency. And then at the Shelter, we're going to have American Red Cross doing that evaluation. At the ELC and Dispatch, I have the top radio people for the state of Minnesota and Homeland Security coming in to evaluate that area. And then if you go one further to the boom deployment, that's going to be another big area. Now, this is, if you look on the map, that's those white dotted lines, that's simulating actual boom deployment that we're going to do that day. CN Rail donated thousands of dollars worth of fence booms to us, and they also gave us a container, and they're permanently stored on that bank. And if you can drive in there and you can look at it, it says International Falls Fire Department on it, that's where all the booms are. We want it there, close to the water, because it's that, we need to get those booms across quickly if there's a product that goes in the water. So we're actually going to deploy those booms all the way across, but because it's going into private property on the Canadian side, we're actually not going to anchor it. We can't. We never got permission from that company that's turning down the mill on that side. So we're going to get it up close to the shore and act like it was anchored. We do have a permanent anchor there, but we just have to wait until we're done with that process.
What is the process of the reason for the boom?
What's that?
Reason for the boom?
Okay, that's a good point. I'd have to skip ahead, and I will skip ahead because I have to tell you why. If a product goes in the water at the bridge, okay, everything flows towards the dam from that area, all right? So we need to get a boom across if there's a top-floating substance. And what I'm going to use at the dispersion site that you see here, I had a straw bale, but it's not going to be straw. Straw is really hard to get right now because of the drought, so I'm going to use woodchips, which we have abundance of, you know, with PCA, and they're going to give us that. I've gotten permission from the DNR, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Ministry of Natural Resources on the Canadian side to put woodchips in the water. That's simulating a top-floating substance, say, oil, crude oil. Now, going back to the boom site, I'll explain why, what's the difference between a regular boom and a fence boom. Because the water is moving at a higher rate there because of the current, a regular boom won't hold a top-floating substance because it'll hit, that boom only goes down so far in the water, and when it hits it at a rapid pace, it hits it and then flows under. So a fence boom is, goes deeper in the water, thus will contain that top-floating substance before it can go any further downstream, before it hits the dam, before it goes through the dam and then contaminates, you know, the Rainy River and then Lake of the Woods. We want to stop it. But I also have a secondary site, which I'm not going to be deploying at that point, but that's below the dam, that's the secondary boom site. So we have two sites. You want to make sure that you have a primary and you have a backup for everything.
Closing the dam.
What's that?
Closing the dam.
Well, we can't close the dam, period. Well, you can't close it all because the water would build up so quickly, you know, so there has to have some flow through the dam. That's, you know, maybe minimal, they can't close some of the gates off, you're right, Mayor.
Could you put another fence right where the dam can be closed?
We could. Yep, you could. Yep. You know, an example of a top-floating substance, two years ago, I put fourteen bales of straw as a mini-exercise in preparation for this at the Rainier Bridge. I dispersed fourteen bales of straw. It took two hours before it hit the dam. And what it did, when it did hit the dam, it pooled up on either side of the dam, which means then you could have equipment come in called, for lack of a better term, it's like sucker trucks, and they come in and they skim the surface in that product and get it out of the water. So it didn't actually go through the dam.
I think you should look at the construction of the dam, because if you close the dam, you do have a lock system that used to go under right on the north side, the Canadian side. Obviously, that would handle all the water, but you have a very limited space.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Real easy to work at, because you get at it, you know. So you should be look at concentrating it there.
No, it's true.
You people, your water.
Would it be a focal point, you're saying, for? Yep. And I'm working with the, you know, the PCA and the dam with that. Of course, that day, they're not going to close anything, they're going to simulate everything. All right, from the boom deployment, you look at the water plant. I spent a lot of time with Bruce Wilson, who's the superintendent, supervisor, I should say, there, of the water plant. And he at first wanted to actually shut down, go through the process of shutting down the intake, just to test their process and their emergency operations plan, but they're not going to do that that day simply because they're working on a water tower in the International Falls area to shut it down and say the pumps don't reactivate, well, nobody's going to have water for a while. We don't want that to happen, but they're going to actually simulate it. And that, they'll self-evaluate, I don't have an evaluator either in there, but I do have evaluators at the boom deployment site from the state. State Fire Marshal's Office and the Duluth Fire Department executives will be up here critiquing that boom deployment on how we put it across. And if you look at, going backwards a little bit, the angle that I put that is for a reason. The product, we're hoping would funnel the product, top-floating substance, to our bank. That's why it's like that at an angle. All right, now, going to the most important, Rainier area. As you see, Rainier Hall is going to, this hall, I rented this hall for that day, just as a, probably a moolah point for a lot of my role players, just as a backup for getting our plans together if we need it. And then the incident location is going to be right over there, across from the post office in the field. I got permission from Mr. Woods to use the field. And what's going to be brought in there, because we can't do any of the exercise on railroad property. It just, I don't want to pay, I don't have the money for one point two million dollars per hour to stop the train that day, so I'm not going to do that. So we're going to simulate that field as the point of where the accident happened on land. And the State Fire Marshal's Office is bringing up a trailer with a car, a tanker car on it. It's going to go in that field, and that, the firemen and our chemical assessment team that we have based in International Falls, by the way, there's, we control a region of chemical assessment team, which is pretty important in our area, and we're pretty lucky to have them. They're especially highly-trained personnel from the International Falls Fire Department that know how to respond to a hazardous material spill, and they're based out of here, so they're going to be able to respond very quickly. We don't have to wait like a lot of other cities. So in that field, they're going to respond first with the firemen, then they're going to do the chemical assessment team, they'll go up and assess the damage, but we're also going to have product along the shoreline, just down from Ms. Balls' place here on that riverbank, and I spoke with her and told her, I told her what we're planning to do and not to be shocked or anyone, you know. We're going to have simulated fires along the bank, and so the fire department can actually respond with their fire truck, their new fire truck, by water, and then they're also going to be responding on land, too. And then if you look at the, in the gold, it's called a SIM cell, that's called a simulation cell, and that's going to be based on a Candle Lever in the conference room. And what that is, is those are people from Homeland Security that will be throwing injects. Injects are like, say, little monkey wrenches, little things that they send and say, all right, I'm going to have evaluators and controllers at each one of these sites, and they're going to radio those people and say, oh, now we have an accident on eleven east. Now you're fighting a fire on land, possibly in the water, you're dealing with a rail car, and oh, now we got a fire, because that stuff happens, you know, we have other things that happen. We want to make sure that we have the resources that can break off and handle anything else if we need someone having a heart attack, an ambulance may have to break away and go there. So they're going to be throwing all these different injects at all these different locations. The hospital may be called on to do more things. The ELC, more things. So all of that base of operations is going to happen in this simulation cell. So I'm not going to take up too much more time. I could spend literally probably three, four hours talking about this in much more detail, but I won't do that. I wanted you to know that Rainier is going to be the base of the biggest full-scale exercise in Minnesota has ever done. And what will it do? It will make us all better trained to respond to anything, especially a hazardous material spill here. So also, I believe I gave you a copy of my press release that I put out some time ago. I'm going to be putting out another press release here shortly, updating this one. And I gave you also a save the date so that you can put it up in here and everywhere else, too. So I also plan on getting a VIP bus. Arrowhead Transit has donated a bus along with a driver for the entire day. And the VIPs, meaning all of you, if you want to be on that bus along with staff from Senator Smith, Senator Klobuchar, and the governor's office, along with commissioners and City International Falls people, council people, if they want to be on it, they're going to go and tour all these evaluation sites that you see on this map, and you get a firsthand view of what a full-scale emergency operations center is and what it looks like. It's amazing down there right now, what we have, the technology, we're going to have two drones in the air, one above Rainier, one floating going back and forth to the different evaluation sites, and that's going to be streamed into my emergency operations center and the incident command that's going to be just down the street. that's gonna be just down the street.
Is probably less than someone from Homeland Security to go there.
We're not gonna be spying on anybody, we're just gonna be giving an overall view.
Do we have to register for that to get on the bus?
Uh, I am going to be sending you, um, that invite list, uh, in, shortly, probably by the end of the week, if not by the first of next week. And, and you can get on that bus and, and watch it, but it's gonna be amazing with the, like I said, the drones in the air will give, uh, people an incident command, which is gonna be set up here. I never spoke of that. Real quickly, I'll talk about, that's going to be like, say, the fire chief, that's going to be the, the first responders, uh, kind of a base of operations that usually is first set up. Incident command's always first, the emergency operations center comes about an hour later, 'cause it takes time to get all of that together and the EOC. But they're going to be able to get the live stream from those, um, drones, so that they get a bird's eye view of what's really happening. It helps us respond and get our resources where they're needed much faster when you have an aerial view of it. So, um, that's it in a nutshell. Again, there's, there's much more, but I think if you get on that tour bus, or even if you're, uh, on the street and watching, you're gonna get a show. You're gonna get a really good show of what, how we can respond.
I got one question, well. With the EOC, are you gonna be in charge of Fort Francis, too? Where they all come together and all that?
Yes, yeah, good point, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I forgot to mention that. Um, when I spoke to them about, you know, what we were doing, they jumped right on board. And they can't come across the border yet, but they're gonna open up their emergency operations center, they're gonna respond as if it was an emergency, because if the product hits the water there, it's gonna affect, obviously, like I said, um, earlier, both sides. So they're gonna respond accordingly, but they're gonna go off of my emergency operations center. So, there'll be a unified message sent from us, created, and then sent to them, and then they'll send it and disperse it amongst, uh, their city, and their entire city that day. So it's gonna be, uh, that, again, that's, we've been doing that for the last three years anyways. If you have, look at the spills that has happened recently in the last few years, Patrick Greer, who's the public information officer, myself have always communicated each other, sent a message.
I got a couple of questions. One, I see there's, uh, you mentioned, uh, the clinic, I mean, they had more staff than the hospital.
Yes.
I don't see you mentioning that, why wouldn't you bring those people in?
Yes, um, they are working with, uh, Rainier Medical Center's always been in touch with them already, and they're working with them and sharing staff.
So they're all covered under Rock House, right?
Yes, but because they don't have the emergency setup and decon and triage like that Rainier Medical Center.
They get the doctors and nurses.
Yes, 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 and, but they're doing that.
I don't think they wanna include those guys.
Yep.
The other thing, uh, because we're covered with our rural fire department here, they need to be involved in this.
Who will?
Rural Fire Department.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. We're gonna have to use, we're gonna have to use everyone, including little ones.
It's a rural source of fire protection, so it's saying.
Correct, correct.
One thing I really do like is, you know, I think it's real important, anytime you have an emergency medical controls center, because there'll be a big issue separating facts from rumors and how rumors should start, all kinds of things. So if everything goes through the control center and the VAC center, very important, if you lose contact with somebody, you know, go check to see if they're there.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I like this really, uh, main point that break from this is, uh, several months ago, within this new expansion of the Canadian National Bridge coming up.
Yep.
We've sent a letter, you know, we sent it to our congressmen, our senators, Canadians, uh, relief, some early detection stuff in this new bridge, you know, if you have a chlorine leak or oil leak, uh, part of their new construction is we want to see protection built into, you know, whether it's a siren or flashing lights or whatever, we want to see that as part of the new construction. Because they, right now, I don't know if we have anything, so I would think your, your position and your Sheriff's Department, everything should really be endorsing that.
Yes.
Because best protect, best helping is there, earlier you get the detection, the better chance you're gonna have to stand the problem.
Right, right.
That's all I've heard here, to get on it right away. Well, if the siren blown, 'cause they got a leak, that's the best chance that we have of escaping that disaster. So I, I really like to see your office and Sheriff's Department endorse that recommendation of early detection of that bridge.
Alright, 100% agree. I, I think, you know, the, the networking that, that we've created over the last five years with Canadian officials.
Well, you were talking to him direct, and, and the idea is that we have to get this built and better designed, which just don't happen.
Right, right.
So, I, I expect that for you.
And another thing before, and, um, we have a new early warning system as far as getting a message, an, an emergency message out, it's called IPaaS, Integrated Public Awareness Warning System. And, and it goes right hand in hand with Everbridge, but IPaaS, when a message is sent out, and we have, we're actually gonna use it that day, I had to get FCC clearance, uh, 90 days in advance before we could even do that. But what that does is it hits every cellphone, whether you're from this area or not, we can draw the area that we want that sent to, which is gonna be the entire northern part of this area. It'll hit every cellphone, it'll hit the radio stations, it'll hit the TVs, computers, if you're hooked up on wifi, everybody will be notified that they have, uh, a message of where to go, what they're looking at, and, you know, what's happening that day. So it's gonna be a, that's a, that's another great thing that we have for our area, so.
Good, good deal.
Alright, I know I've taken up too much of the time.
Thank you for all that information, a lot to, a lot to, uh, that we ask you about, August 28th.
Yes.
August 28th is the date, right?
Uh, August 26th, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
And I have to reuse these, so I'm sorry, thank you.
I have no other questions. I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
Folks, moving on, uh, moving on, I wanna thank you, Anna Loy, your pleasure. Glad we got somebody listening for us. Uh, moving on, uh, to be the July 24th, we'll just for our statement, do you need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, approve, approve conditional use permit for tunnels and cowl for storage building?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
A motion and second, all in favor.
Aye. And one asked.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, we had that information with Mr. Costa, uh, Rainier wrap-up days, uh, to accept a $500 donation from the Rural Fire Protection Association for Rainier Days, we, you know, motion and a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, to approve, approve conditional use permit for tunnels and cowl for storage building?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
A motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
And one asked. Opposed, so carried. Uh, we had that information with Mr. Costa, uh, Rainier wrap-up days, uh, to accept a $500 donation from the Rural Fire Protection Association for Rainier Days, we, you know, motion and a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, at Rainier wrap-up days, you only, uh, Todd, I think you guys had another successful , uh, you tell us what your pancake feed and anybody else, has got anything to add?
We had the, uh, best pancake feed we've ever had. We served 225 people and we took in $1,200, and the record before that was, in 2019, we did 873 or something like that. We did 1,200 guys, as fundraisers, that was pretty good.
That was awesome.
Okay. As far as I know, we didn't have too many incidents, everything seemed to run smooth at large parade, as everybody knows, and, uh, I think that everything was well attended. Didn't see a lot of sheriff, uh, high patrol anything going around, so I think we had a relatively very successful Rainier Days. I wanna thank everybody that helped, uh, help put it on, it takes the whole community, and I did see a lot of community involved in this, Rainier Rec, a lot of individuals, obviously you guys with the pancakes and the liquor store, all these other things. Uh, I wanna thank everybody again for putting on such a good performance. Uh, with that, uh, we'll move on to Cheryl, do you want anything to add to Rainier, uh, the wrap-up?
Um, no, Jen's alive.
Okay, with that, then we'll just move to the open forum. Charles.
So now I'm like, I'm leaning to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, and so I'm Charles, but I'm here with my wife, Chris, and, and it has struck me, as this played out here, that, and everything is relative department, so we're going from a major international emergency exercise, now we're talking about rats.
You mean the world to us.
Um, but any event, so we were, last week, accused of being the source of the rat problem, um, and I'm gonna just read this so I don't get off talking, we've been here long. Uh, as requested, we did hire a professional. He carefully inspected all the property, he went through and under all the buildings. He found no trails or feces on our property, and therefore, no evidence of rats traveling around our property, except he did find two girls about a foot from the lot line, uh, near an opening under the fence. He said they appeared to have been created fairly recently, um, but they did not seem to have been used in the last few days, uh, suggesting maybe they got opened up when the big commotion started and they'd already been taken care of, uh, or the rats involved and been taken care of. Any event, um, uh, so in summary, he just didn't find any evidence of a significant problem on our property, and he is taking the necessary steps to be sure that we don't become part of the problem. And, and so, you know, certainly, we agree, and I think pretty much everybody, that, that there is a problem, and we're certainly as anxious as anyone to have it solved, the, on at least four properties, including ours, traps have been used, um, and I believe about 15 rats have been trapped. And although we had 10 to 12 traps out, we didn't get any rats, uh, when I would explain that to others, it was fairly clear that they just felt that we just didn't know how to trap rats, 'cause we're obviously the problem. Um, and, um, the professional's conclusion is that there weren't any rats there to trap. And so it's, it's very upsetting to us to be accused publicly of being the source of the problem when we're not. It would also seem that we're considered incompetent, uh, we're the only ones asked to hire a professional. Apparently, everybody else, including our city government, is deemed competent and knowledgeable to handle this themselves, but we are not. Those things are, you know, hurtful, that's really the deal. So I'm not suggesting that others need a professional. Actually, on the contrary, um, fewer rats are being trapped and quite possibly, the measures taken are being successful. That being said, uh, continued vigilance to minimize the food sources is one part, and minimize the habitat is the other, uh, and, and, uh, so we just gotta keep on it. Now, that's my view as a non-expert, but I, I think that's the deal. Our professional had some potentially useful suggestions, uh, which I'd be happy to discuss with anybody who's interested. And it also might be considered, uh, that the city would arrange, uh, some public educational system with a true professional who could answer people's questions, if there's any interest, and, and I don't know about that, but that's just a thought. Certainly, I'm very much in favor of pursuing the problem in a cooperative involuntary fashion. I'm, I'm certainly against having one individual decide what the problem is, decide what the action is needed, and then hound the city government until they do whatever that individual thinks needs being done. Uh, but no, I do wanna thank, uh, Mayor Wagner, for sure, for being generous with his time on the phone yesterday to just discuss this issue in general, as well as personally, as it applies to us. So, thank you guys for your efforts and thoughts, and my dream would be that actually it is kinda just winding down and it's all history, but, uh, but I, that being said, I don't think it's dumb to put some effort into thinking, is there something we can do to see that it doesn't flare up again, and, and, and not to belate, but just among other things that I certainly hadn't thought of, that he brought up, is that, that, uh, most, and just one of me, but most dumpsters have a drain hole in the bottom, and most of the time you leave that open, so you're not dumping a lot of water in the truck when you're emptying the garbage, and most rats can fit through most of those drain holes. So even if you think you're being really good and putting all your stuff in the appropriate dumpster, the rats may have full access. Uh, and, and certainly, I'm more convinced than I ever was that they are tricky, so it, it, it's a challenge. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, a quick question for you, I know you had your professional look around the outside of the building, set some traps out of, what type of traps, were they poison or steel traps or?
Well, and that I've learned as well. When you ask a professional, essentially, you're asking them to put out poison. That's what they do.
What was that again, I'm sorry?
Oh, they put up, I'm sorry. When you ask a professional to deal with a rat problem, they put out poison. So either.
Poison?
Yeah.
Okay, poison traps. Okay, and the other question, when he inspected your thing and only found two girls, is what you said, uh, was there any, did you inspect the inside of the property, uh, inside?
Oh, he was under the.
I was saying, like, on the other side, so.
Under the buildings, in the buildings, everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, so he, he re, he spent, I think he's close to two hours there.
Yeah, I, he don't spit, I was there, I didn't, but I did see it, so.
So, yeah, I'm really, it definitely was not cursory, and he definitely seemed to know what he's looking for.
Okay, uh, you know, another issue that brought up, the launcher, uh, an hot seater, glad you brought that, you hired a professional, you've got some information for us, and we will absorb that, take that, I think, but also the issue of, like, I talked to you, I know we had a hard time reading your water weaver to the vines, you said you've taken care of some of these light issues, uh, also at the Finstead property, uh, there are barrels there that have oil, appears to be oil leaking around them and things like that. We need those things corrected, uh, I do have some pictures here of it taken of that, but, uh, we need some of those things corrected in, uh, if there's some light, and, and, again, I have been on your property, you've seen it, you know, from there, so, but if there's some light issues, you, you, we've had this conversation before, so if you're working towards that, we'd like to see that continue, but obviously, uh, the Finstead building, and motors and oil and stuff, and containers laying around, those have to be picked up. I mean, uh, there's oil leaking in the ground by them and stuff, so we'll try to get after that. Anything that council can add to questions?
I was happy to hear what you had to say.
And, and I wanna continue, you know, obviously, we have a rock, a rat problem, hopefully, you, you, you're working on it, and I, and, and nobody says it's your problem, and that was the first source, because of unoccupied buildings are, you know, natural, you know, natural inhabitants, but.
But they're not, well, that's.
I have a couple more thoughts that I wanna kick around with you before we bring it up, but there's a good place, mother, or is?
So, anyway, uh.
Should I, I can speak to the experience of Sam and our, which Columbia, we also have to see the rail coming through, and we developed a rat problem that they mostly target to the rail. And, um, in the experience in the city and from the advice from the city, it wouldn't, it would be like, they could be living in the couches in an unoccupied building there. Um, they eat things like paint in sheds, any kind of things that are in paper boxes. Um, they could be eating the wires in your cars that you are not driving. Um, they, they could be living everywhere, not just in a home like that one. So one thing we advise you is to, uh, stop using bursey, move their, just hands away from homes, that no one should compost, they start the city composting, and there are all these things that seem like, the city gave out that information, it really helped everybody. Another thing to do is to put flower down and see where their trails are, put the cages, traps on the flower spots where you see their footprints, because they're really, uh, hard to catch. Um, don't put up poison. Put the cages, the traps on the flower spots where you see their footprints, because they're really hard to catch. Don't put out poison, because if you can get weasels, weasels really can take care of the rat problem. And cats, keep them away, but they get killed, unfortunately. There were just so many different things. The city informants about that were really helpful, and everybody could get on it. Because if they're in one spot, they're everywhere, it's everywhere.
Another, Mr. Mayor, but I've seen myself on several occasions over the years, is that grain being leaked out of the train, train cars coming from the cell phone. And it sits there, and I'm not talking about just a couple grains of feed or whatever it is that grains. Big, a big line, you know, as far as I can see. And I think rats are just like we've had experience with raccoons. And I think they track the oil ways to get to a good food source, and I've seen raccoons.
Sure, there's, I think Cheryl's mentioned that, he talked to his professional, and he said, you've got a railroad there. That's exactly why, he said, the leaking of the grain is always a problem on railroads. When it comes to vermin or wildlife of any type, it resorts to two things, habitat and food. That's what they're about. So if you can control the food source, or somehow, like you say, cover garbage cans, watch your holes in your dumpsters, things like that, but also habitat. You know, I mean, again, unoccupied buildings with rattle, same or something like that, that could be the source. But the habitat, but the food is, so you got two things. Were they living, were they... So there's two things we have to try to address, and I think he's addressed both of those, as far as the professional, we acknowledge him. So anyway, and I haven't seen, I don't know what, I guess the report is, since you took over, other people started trapping them, other things. Have any been caught since then? I think Green was here last, yes, Dan?
As far as I know, by talking to my neighbor, Paul Jones.
Yep.
And we haven't caught any mice or anything in the last five days or so. And towards the, like, last week, there was just some smaller, it could have possibly been rats. I didn't examine them, rats usually have longer tail. And real small ones, I don't think there's been anything in the last five days or so. And I talked to, I talked to Paul Jones yesterday, and he said that he had recently talked to the exterminator at the Hellboy. And he was speculating that the recent road destruction here might have chased some rats out of a sewer that they were living in. As a possible source, maybe they got disrupted, there habitat.
That would not be the case, because we didn't disrupt any sewer. The only sewer that was done this lockdown was a storm sewer, right? No sanitary sewers were disturbed on them, so I don't think that was the case. But the good news is, since you've taken that action, and other people have come aware of it. You see, you know, I remember this problem five years ago, something like that, while our, you know, I, we had an issue. And we took care of it, so it sounds like we're on the right path here. So with that said, Charles, I'm glad you made the movements. But I wouldn't give you any pictures here of those barrels, so you don't...
Oh, sure.
...talk about, and we'd like to see that, Charlie can do it, you.
Well, and we will, we'll be working on it.
I'll be okay. Thank you for giving me some time.
Thanks, man.
Okay, anything else, anybody else in the open forum?
You know, I always feel we've got the Rainy Lake Gazette, that they have the minutes for the county commissioners and for the Rainier International Qualifying Council. And since nobody ever comes to report on minutes anymore, I would think it would be appropriate that the Rainier Council meeting minutes would also be included in that.
We just made that vote tonight.
What?
We just voted on that tonight to make that our legal paper.
I know, but you don't put, you've never put the minutes in there. I'm suggesting, we're not required to. I'm suggesting you have the minutes in, that's why I do it. It would be nice for people to be aware of what's going on.
We have a problem with that.
We didn't have to do it, she just made a suggestion, and she would see it, or it would be something done.
And we need to get the reporter to, they used to report on what we talked about anyway.
Right.
So we need to get the reporter here.
Do we have our minutes online?
It's security, that's all, okay.
Yeah, they are online, but not everybody's online.
I know what that's not, for sure.
So, yeah, there's something, it would seem appropriate that they would be in.
We'll consider that, man, okay, anything else?
I'd like to mention something real quick.
Here, Cheryl.
You know, I, just from a livelihood standpoint, I personally am, through word of mouth, heard city officials with all certainty say that areas are wrapped up on one specific family's property. I do not think that's very kind, I don't think it's professional, and it's definitely not going to be called by professional. And it's a very minimal, I think that person, or that other family, I think we all know who we're talking about. Apology, apologies.
Well, obviously, we addressed the problem that was brought to us, Cheryl, by more than one person. But one didn't make a presentation on that, and we addressed it, and we asked Cheryl to do that, and Chris to do that, and they did do that. And I see we're making progress on that, and, you know, to publicly accuse somebody.
I'm sorry, was, were those people that came from paying qualified professionals? Or maybe you guys should have parried the qualified professionals, see help available before accusing people in our statement. And I just want to say one more thing. This man right here is the more for our society, has just pulled this entire neighborhood together. And at the bare minimum, he is earned all of our respect.
I don't know, I have a lot of misrespect for Charles, and you know that. So I think what you're saying here is, we address the problems that brought to us. When Cheryl brought that, had sent us a letter, and we said, we brought to this problem. And he had said he was going to, he received a letter saying he was going to hire a professional to look at that. That is what I wanted to hear, so I had a second opinion, or a third opinion, or a professional opinion of that. And that's exactly what he did, I'm glad he did.
You're putting a burden on, you're putting a burden on families instead of yourself, so? I mean, that's just not, well, that's not all you...
You know...
I can refuse all you guys, it's sort of...
I understand that issue, I understand that issue, but the issue also is not just the rat, it was also a bunch of light. And obviously, we have the pictures, I'm gonna give you that, so there's multiple issues here.
Professional, professionalism here just isn't, isn't up to our standards. Professionalism amongst all this, with the way you guys have handled that.
How bad? I think we handled it very well, we...
I came into the city office asking just for information on it, and the city official told me with all certainty, yeah, there's rats there. There's rats on that property, that's where they're coming from, 100% certain. That's telling from a city official. From a liability standpoint, that is not a wise thing to do.
Well, you didn't hear from me, but I did tell you, Charles, I mean, Charlie, that when Cheryl told me he was going to hire a professional to take care of that, I didn't figure I had to get a third professional to come in and do that, and see the results, and handle the other things. So I don't know how you would expect to do it, I'm glad we took care of this problem. I'm sorry if Mr. Hellboy was, or Mrs. Hellboy were offended by that. But it was an obvious situation there, with the rats, rattle's on the property, rats cop next door, rats everything. I'm glad they took the initiative to hire a professional.
You handled it wrong, yeah, you handled it wrong, because you, John handled it wrong. Many people helped.
Next time we have a rat problem, John, I'll send them to you.
I think the point is that...
Motion to adjourn.
This was brought up on public. If people want to watch Channel 7, they will see the names of the Hellboys being slammed. I mean, that really is not a professional way to do anything. It was not done well.
Oh, there's, hey, hang on. There, there is, I witness, live people.
Before we recognize, as we've had a motion, we did not have a second, I recognize Dan. I think everybody has something to say, he's a stakeholder, yes? Go ahead, Dan.
I'll, when this...
Keep it civil, everybody keep this civil.
The whole issue came to light in July 12. My neighbor lived right across the street, right next to the property. We had a case that was out watering his lawn in the morning. And he witnessed the rat coming out, over the fence, under the fence. And he squirted the rat with a hose, then the rat ran over and went under my pickup. He went over and took a picture of it, and I got it on my cellphone, if anybody wants to see it. That was July 12. Later on that same day, that rat showed up in my daughter's backyard, while I was rolling out hoses back there. And I witnessed the rat being lethargic, like it had possibly been poisoned or something. And it was Friday, this is like 11, 12 o'clock in the morning.
Rats are not a term.
Exactly. But this rat was sick. It was sick, and so, and I saw it the same day, and then the next day, I talked to Paul Jones. And he found a rat that fits this description dead in his backyard, like it had been poisoned. So there are witnesses, and my daughter has seen rats, like, two years ago, in the last couple of years, coming out of that property. And we had an emergency case to do with that, so it's not, it's not...
They're probably, oh, aren't they?
It's not just, it's right next door. So this is, this is not just your shit, this has been going on for several years.
Can I say one thing? It's a community problem, we're trying to solve it as quickly as we can.
Exactly.
So why is everybody pointing fingers?
I know, nobody was pointing fingers until you get...